Good evening and welcome to the January tenth, two thousand twenty-three Gilderland School District Board of Education meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phones and rise for the pledge?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is we have public comment. Do we have any public comments? No, okay, thank you. Next, we have a program report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Wiles.
All right, good evening, everyone. We have an exciting start to our Board of Education meeting tonight. We have some guests here who have come with a very large piece of paper with some interesting writing on it, so I can't wait to see what that's all about. But we are this evening going to be the recipient of some technology equipment and some cash to help us start some exciting new programming. And to say more about it, I am going to invite Mr. James Connors come up to the microphone. He is from Intel to talk about this exciting opportunity for Gilderland High School.
Hello, hello. Thank you all so much for having me today. I'm very, very excited to be here on behalf of Intel. So just to provide a little bit more context around why I am here and exactly why this grant is being awarded to the school here. So I work with our Intel Retail Edge program. And our Intel Retail Edge program is actually a training campaign. We have a website that we keep regularly updated with trainings on the latest and greatest technology. Now, this is aimed at the retail community so that the people working inside locations that sell computers such as Best Buy or office stores, et cetera, so that they're able to stay up to date and then inform customers, whether they be, you know, people working from home and needing to get set up with that, or they have students in school that are doing e-learning, et cetera. We want to make sure that they have all the knowledge because I think we know that computers are becoming just more and more pivotal to the education of our youth, right? So we try to keep them informed and in doing so, we like to run training promotions. And then as an award for those training promotions, we have lots of cool prizes for the staff, but we also love when we do our annual campaign that is Score with Intel Core. And what we do is we actually have thirty stores that win grand prizes and they get to select a school to award a technology grant to. Now, so the Albany Best Buy actually was one of the top ten, one of the grand prize winning locations that got the maximum tech grant, and they've decided to award the school here with that. And actually, if I could have them come up, I have Matt and Doug from the Best Buy location here, and I have this wonderful plaque to award them. And they have something to hand to you all as well, that aforementioned big piece of paper. So guys, congratulations on all the hard work. I actually, I can't even express enough how much work it takes to battle against all the other retail stores across the country and to land number one. So this plaque is to commemorate you guys winning the grand prize and awarding a twenty-five thousand dollar tech grant. This includes technology and five thousand dollars in cash that will be awarded to the school. So congratulations to you guys. There we go. Alrighty, I'm gonna let Matt, who really drove the participation in his location to make all this happen, let him share a few words. While I grab that big piece of paper.
So just to describe a little more about the enormity of it, right? Our store had about eight to twelve competing employees, so folks who work in the store, not just sales associates, but also operations associates, helping learn about Intel product, but also driven by the idea of giving back to the community. Of those eight people, there were a total of nineteen thousand competitors that they were going against. So those eight folks in our store helped drive this competition and ensure that we came out on top. And with Best Buy's commitment to giving back to the community, whether it be our teen tech centers, whether it be St. Jude's and those donations, or even just giving back to specific schools and districts, we knew that Gilderland was in our backyard. It's in the same district. So that's why we selected the high school here as our recipient. So, thank you all.
I think that would be fantastic. If we could get a photo with some of the students, I would use this awesome technology.
I just wanted to say thank you to Best Buy and Intel for this donation. We have been investing in the esports team for a while and we got some students from one of our Python programming class and a couple of our help desk students who are potential esports players to be here to accept the award tonight, so.
Pete, introduce yourself.
So I'm Pete and I work for the help desk here and, yeah, thank you. I probably won't be playing on the team, but I'm interested in the technology and what's around it, so, yeah.
Hey, I'm Bob and, thank you.
I'm Jake. I'm in the Python class as a lab aide and I'd like to thank for the technology we're getting. It's gonna be great.
I'm Tim. I'm on the help desk and thank you for everything, guys.
I'm Nakshi. I'm a junior and I'm part of the Python program. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nakshi and I'm part of AP Konsai program and thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Prima. I'm part of the Python program and thank you.
Hi, I'm Sanju and I'm part of the Python program and thank you so much.
Mike should stand for him too, right? Mike should stand for him too, right, from the high school?
Mike, you should get in there.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Sherry, please get in there too.
She.
She's the teacher. Hold on.
Right, one more.
Come on, Mrs. Sherry.
There you go.
Perfect, alright. Thank you all so much. So glad you could join us tonight.
Great, thank you, Dr. Wiles, and thank you again to our special guests and all the students that came out tonight. Next on the agenda, we have the budget development and I will turn this over to Dr. Wiles or to Mr. Van Alsteyn? Yes, both of you?
So, thank you all. Glad to see I could drive everyone away. It's hard to follow up a giant check being donated, but I'd like to start out by thanking everyone for making my first couple of weeks in Gilderland so wonderful and hopefully a very auspicious beginning to a long time here. What I want to talk about at the start, at this point in the budget process, are some of the financial tools or concepts we use to help drive sort of short-term and long-term financial sustainability in school districts, and that is fund balance and reserves. So we're gonna start out by defining these concepts. Fund balance is what we have left over in the general fund at the end of the fiscal year, and it can come about because we brought in more revenue than we forecast or expenses were a little less than we had projected, but then we have some sort of savings or net positive cash flow. And then what we do with this depends on how much we have. So school districts are allowed to carry over four percent of this fund balance, of the next year's budget in fund balance. And then there are other things we can do with it. And those four categories are assigning it. We can use it right now to pay bills we have in the current fiscal year. We can appropriate it. That is, we can use it in the following year's budget in place of raising taxes through the levy. We can put it in reserve funds. This is restricted fund balance. And these reserves are designated legally allowed uses to set money aside and sort of save it for a number of possible legally defined options. And then finally, there's that unassigned fund balance, which is subject to that four percent limit. There are thirteen legally allowed reserve fund uses in New York State and they are subject to different levels of restriction. So some of them, creating, spending from them has to get voter approval. Some of them, a board can create and designate and use revenue from, depending on the various source. And again, as we get into their use, they can be applied in a budget for a specific purpose. We're thinking about how to understand it by using the framework of our personal finances. The unassigned fund balance is like the cash reserve you would hopefully have in a rainy day fund. We don't know what is going to happen, but you keep some cash in your checking account or your savings account in case something happens. You lose a job, something catastrophic happens, that's your emergency fund. This is your cash. There's no designated plan for it. It's there when you need it to cushion in times of crisis. Reserves are like you're saving for something. You set up a 529 plan to pay for college expenses, or you set up a savings account to make a down payment on a home, or you put money in a retirement fund. Now, each of these purposes has their legal restrictions around them, sort of like school districts' reserves. You can create a savings account to save up for a down payment, but you could take money out of that without a lot of restriction. Whereas if you put money in a 401K or a 403B for retirement, there are legal restrictions. So just like some school district reserves have more rules around their use, some forms of school district, personal savings have different legal requirements as well. So why do we, why do school districts want to have healthy reserves and fund balance? The first is flexibility. We don't know what's going to happen in a given year. Something pops up, whether it's something internal to a school district, whether it's the emergence of a global pandemic, we can deal with that challenge. We can also do long-term planning, right? So if you are saving for a capital project, putting money in reserves lowers the amount of money that we would need to borrow, saving taxpayers' money. Also, having healthy reserves affects the school district's credit rating. This makes it easier to borrow and it makes it cheaper to borrow. Lower interest rates with a better credit rating, that saves taxpayers' money over the long term as well. And finally, having those reserves that we can appropriate in the following year can help with stability in school district finances in the levy and local taxes. Now, where people can get into, where school districts can get into trouble is when fund balance is used to fill in for recurring expenses. The metaphor we use here is the fiscal cliff, and it's pretty easy to picture what happens when you fall off a cliff, right? You're going along and all of a sudden, everything falls out. Because what happens is if you're using fund balance to cover recurring expenses, you don't just run that bank account out, but those, the expenses endure, right? So when your fund balances are exhausted, you have to find money to fund those expenses or make painful cuts. So fund balance and reserves are a very valuable tool, but they can also be very dangerous for the short and long-term prospects of a school district if they are used as a substitute for recurring revenue. An example of how Gilderland has used fund balance and reserves in times of crisis, we see here when the Great Recession started, Gilderland had a little over eleven million dollars in fund balance and reserves, but because of state aid cuts and freezes, they used the reserves to help fill in some of that cushion, which minimized the damage to the district, but also resulted in challenges to the credit rating. It led to the office of the state comptroller designating the district as being susceptible to fiscal stress. And as I said earlier, that bond rating is crucial. So if the district's bond rating was lowered, when it was lowered from AA three to A one, borrowing money became more expensive. Again, we have to borrow money to fund capital projects or other long-term expenses, so having those higher costs ultimately affects taxpayers. And then in New York State, about halfway through that last chart, the state implemented a tax cap. So about ten years into the tax cap, the levy growth in a school district is subject to a district-specific calculation that's based on inflation after exempting some allowable permission, permissible uses for additional levies. This is known as the two percent rule. It's not actually two percent for school districts themselves. But school districts, the levy growth has been lowered as a result of the tax cap, making that long-term financial management piece so much more important, right? Because if you need additional revenue, you're constrained in how much you can raise in a given year. So this is the current state of fund balance and reserves in Gilderland. That four point four million roughly is the four percent fund balance, the unassigned amount. So it's good to have that. If we go through the various reserves, were you to have a copy of our reserves from last year, the big one, the difference that would jump out to you is the tax surgiory reserve has gone down to zero. This is a reserve that is, allows school districts to set aside money in case of negative judgments and tax surgiory claims. These are when a entity, a property holder contests the assessed value of its property in the courts. If they win, not only is the value of that property lowered in the taxing process going forward, but the district is liable to pay back three years of what was overtaxed, so those tax refunds. So Gilderland has faced some of those. There are more on the horizon, but that's what that reserve was used for. The bright spot here is the retirement contribution reserve. This allows districts to set aside money to pay for the costs of pension on the district's part. So every year, the employee reserve, retirement system and the teacher retirement system, ERS and TRS, set a contribution rate for employers. That is, you have to pay in a percentage of your employee's income into the pension system to help fund, you know, future pensions. Those, those costs are not at all determined by a district. They are imposed, you know, they're set by the state. And while the calculation is complex, one of the big drivers of it is market performance because the state invests pension funds. And so when the market is doing really well, the contribution rate lowers. When the market is not doing quite as well, the contribution rate increases. Not, last year was not a great year for the stock market, if you followed those sorts of things. So that means going forward, we'd expect the contribution rate to go up. This kind of reserve allows a district to set money aside to plan for that, to use for those costs without affecting a current year program. So that, that is a bright spot in the reserve and fund balance. This graph right here compares Gilderland to suburban council peer districts by looking at the total amount of that unrestricted fund balance and reserves compared to spending in each year. Alright, so if we pull Gilderland out and look at other suburban, suburban council districts, they have about fifteen percent of their spending in fund balance and reserves. Here we see the pandemic hit our expenses or our revenue much harder than the overall suburban council, so our fund balance and reserves dipped. They are coming back up slightly, but we are still well below where our peer districts are. Alright, so again, what this means, we have less cushion for, less cushion for crises, more of a challenge with short and long-term planning, potentially more susceptible to fiscal stress, more expensive to borrow. In dollar terms, this is the gap between what our fund balance and reserves were in a given year and what the other peer suburban council districts were. So again, we see the spike in two thousand twenty-one where we would need about four point four million dollars additional in fund balance and reserves to be at the overall level among other districts. So why does this the starting point of a lot of our financial planning? Because this is our best tool in dealing with challenges that arise and making long-term plans, right? We need to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our students today and the needs of future students. We need to do long-term planning with regards to facilities and capital projects. We may want to launch new initiatives. All of these things are going to depend on ensuring that what we spend today will not imperil our future prospects while making it more important that we sort of shepherd this process with this planning. Because we are subject to restrictions on what we get in state aid, we are entering the final year of a three-year foundation aid phase in at the state level, which has been favorable to Gilderland. We were far underfunded in foundation aid. When the governor Hochul gave her state-of-the-state talk today, she signaled that she is going to be following through on this year three of the foundation aid phase in. So that will be one of the bright prospects. Her executive proposal, her executive budget proposal should be coming out in about two weeks. At that point, we will have a better projection of state aid for next year. We will take these numbers as we continue to work with internal stakeholders and then go to the community in defining and developing next year's budget, all leading up to March seventh, when we will present the superintendent's draft budget. Questions, comments?
I just wanted to clarify, so the whole idea of the foundation aid being restored, that is, so we won't know until March, until how that will impact our district specifically?
So one of the benefits, one of the benefits that we have right now is foundation, so foundation aid itself is an evidence-based formula that the state has developed that asks the question, well, it tries to answer three questions. How much does it cost to successfully educate a student? How much of that can a school district, does a school district have the ability to cover itself with local resources? And then how many additional resources do certain categories of students need that are higher need students, right? So how much more does it cost to successfully educate a student in poverty or a student with disabilities or an English language learner, right? And so all of that develops an amount that the state says this is how much the school district needs from the state to do that. Now, the state's never given those school districts that amount, right? And we've been as high as four to five billion dollars short statewide over time. Where we are right now is next year, every district is set to at least receive that amount. So we can project based on what's in the law, how much we're getting next year. Now, it will go up and down as data change, but we have that tool at our disposal now. So in previous years, we would have to wait for the governor to say, this is how much I want to give a school district. The legislature would then say, well, no, actually, we want to give them this, and it's usually appearing. And then in April, we get the amount and it's somewhere in here. Thankfully, we're not at that point. The reason I highlighted Governor Hochul's address today is even though it's in current law now, we want to make sure it happens in April. And given that she talked about it today, it's a very positive sign that that's actually happening.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the consent items. This includes the minutes from the December sixth meeting, December twentieth meeting, CPSC and CSC recommendations, personnel action and financials. Can I have a motion to approve the consent items? Kelly, second. Katie, any questions or comments? All in favor? I pass as eight, zero.
Before you go on, Dr. Rivera, I just want to point out that Mrs. Sherry.
She happens to be in the audience and she was just appointed our new instructional technology specialist, so congratulations.
Great, thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next, we move on to the information items, curriculum and instruction. Rachel?
Good evening, everyone. I have a few honors for individual students and some of our music program ensembles that I'd like to tell you about this evening. First, Boden Kinnell, who is a senior at Gilderland High School, has been invited to participate as a member of the two thousand twenty-three All Eastern Jazz Ensemble at the National Association for Music Education Eastern Division Conference, which is being held in Rochester from April thirteenth to the sixteenth. The honor ensemble consists of the best high school students from the Eastern Division of the United States, States, excuse me, which stretches from Maine to Washington, D.C. And selection to this prestigious ensemble is highly competitive and students are carefully selected from the Eastern States, all state participants. And so that is quite an accomplishment, so congratulations to Boden. Also, Carson Rittner and Zexi Wang have been selected to participate in the two thousand twenty-three High School Statewide Honor Band, the New York State Band Directors Association Annual Symposium in Syracuse in March. Each year, hundreds of applicants apply for honor band and some are chosen based on their NISMA score from the previous spring. We also have six Farnsworth Middle School students who have been selected to participate in the two thousand twenty-three Middle School Honor Band. They include Adam Heralcheck, who plays the euphonium, Austin Lee with oboe, Anthony Padula, French horn, Caleb Pinder flute, and Erin Vitale trumpet, and Timothy Kelly Malletts, who was also recognized as an alternate for the honor band. The Gilderland High School Wind Ensemble, under the direction of Ms. Kathleen Ellinger, has been selected to perform at the two thousand twenty-three New York State Band Directors Association Annual Symposium, also in Syracuse in March. And Ms. Ellinger and the Wind Ensemble will be presenting a session titled Collaborative Rehearsals in the Traditional Band Setting to band directors from all over New York State. So these are fantastic opportunities for our students and congratulations to all of the music students, their teachers and the ensembles.
Great, thank you, Rachel. Next, superintendent information. Dr. Wiles?
Thank you.
Two items this evening for information. The first is a draft school calendar for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. This draft has been in the works for several weeks in collaboration with the regional colleagues, but also with many stakeholders within the district. We had our most recent meeting to look at the calendar yesterday afternoon. I will just point out a few things about the calendar that are different from things that we've seen in the past. First, it's a one hundred and eighty-five day calendar, which means that includes the possibility for five emergency days or snow days. It also includes a new holiday, a new, and that is on April tenth, two thousand twenty-four. The draft proposal here recommends that we celebrate the holiday of Eid, which is the end of Ramadan. The other point, I just want to, a date that I want to point out that is something new, June seventeenth is a day of instruction here in Gilderland, but the state education department is also recognizing it as a Muslim holiday. It's another portion of the Eid celebration. And even though that is in the middle of Regents Week or in the midst of Regents Week, no Regents exams will be given that day. So it's kind of a new, a new variation on how we will be working through Regents Week next, next June. So I'll take any comments or questions that folks may have. Go ahead, Judy.
I just, excuse me, I just want to say how pleased I am about the Eid celebration because we had students who came and requested it and made a very excellent presentation to us about why it was important to them and that we were able to get it in, I think is wonderful. It's a tribute to them and it's good for us.
Absolutely. I think the students did a tremendous job advocating for something that was important to them. Alright, so the plan then will be to bring this calendar back to the board on January thirty-first for adoption and then we'll go from there. So thank you, everybody. And for everyone who participated in the review of the draft, insights really are helpful and help us get a good calendar for the upcoming year. And my second item this evening, I just wanted to provide a brief update on our conversations around the school resource officer. We spent quite a bit of time in the fall talking about the opportunity that the Gilderland Police Department offered to us to have a SRO in the middle school for the balance of this school year. On December twenty-first. On December twenty-first, Nate Sabrin, Mike Lester, Matt Pinchinott, student Rachel Dwyer and myself were part of an interview team that met at town hall to meet four potential resource, school resource officers. We spent a few hours interviewing the candidates and discussing, and we, at the end, selected Officer Christopher Scarono to be the SRO in our middle school for the balance of the school year. He actually was able to begin on January third, so when we welcomed students back, we also had Officer Scarono there. He has settled right in. I actually visited with him the other morning. We've got an office space for him, and he's getting to know the building, which is no small feat. And he's already got opportunities to push into classrooms, and he's been making himself very visible and available around the building. So I just wanted to recognize everyone who was part of that process and offer my thanks to Gilderland Police Department Chief Dan McNally, who did a great job coordinating, coordinating the interview process. It was thorough, it was productive, it was collaborative, and I think we landed in a great spot. So I'm happy to take any questions or, Nate, you were there. I don't know if you want to weigh in?
No, no, I think you covered it pretty well. I mean, I, I will say, as I said, at, at the process, it was, the candidates were all amazing, exemplary, fine examples of what the Gilderland Police Department has to offer. And I think we settled on what I think is probably the best candidate of, of the floor.
Yes. Our thanks all the way around.
Great, thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next, we have board president information. I have a one item on the agenda. This is the Board of Education goals. I think we talked about this at the beginning of the school year, and this is kind of the midway checkpoint. And hopefully, talking about the goals will help in the planning of the budget. So I have the, you both, you all should have the, the working goals and then the, the document that's letter B that has kind of the updates of what we talked about at previous meetings. I have the Google Doc open, so I thought we could just briefly go through the, the few goals that we had written here. And I can add any notes if anyone wants to provide feedback or make some comments. So the first one is, and Dr. Wiles, I know that you said that you could also provide info, because I know you've, obviously, the districts have obviously been doing work-
Sure.
-around this. So the first one is the, to close the achievement or opportunity gap. And some of the things that we talked about, I think, in the past were, how are we looking or what metrics are being used? Obviously, that was changed during COVID, and now, I guess, post-COVID. I think we talked at the last meeting, the last time we talked about this, we talked about shifting to a focus on student, our social emotional learning with students. And then also, what other, what other ways that we can assess that we're closing that opportunity gap? So I'll just open it up. If people have comments or feedback, I can take notes.
Rebecca, go ahead. The attendance, the discipline, et cetera, at the end of every academic year. And I wonder if it makes more sense to sort of look at it before the budget process? So more like a spring review, as opposed to waiting until the end of the academic year, when the budget is already hopefully passed?
You said attendant, and what was the other data?
There was a list, so attendance, discipline-
Oh, right.
-types of courses offered. We could add to that honors versus AP courses, truancy and absenteeism, engagement in extracurriculars, college admissions, and graduation rates.
I can jump in here, if you don't mind. So we, we do now have quite a bit of quantitative data to look at around these topics. We have been looking in recent weeks at some of our student achievement data as, as illuminated by the results on state assessments, which came back into being last year. So we all recognize very much that those are only one snapshot in time, but they are a useful tool for us to get a window into how are our students doing against the New York State learning standards. And that's what we're focusing on. Here are the standards that these assessments are measuring. How are we doing against those standards? So we just had a, a leadership roundtable session where we spent some time talking about that very thing. And I can see, I do see us continuing us to look at that data, those data points over the course of the school year. We're also interested in some of these other items that are listed, attendance, discipline and suspensions, courses, engagement in extracurriculars. These are being woven in on our equity planning. So we had in this very room today, our secondary schools, middle and high school, looking at beginning their equity action plans. And yesterday, all the elementary buildings were here, and there is interest in digging deeply into these very things to figure out. So what do we need to do next to make sure we have, for example, appropriate participation in our extracurricular programs? Or, and not too much, and, and appropriate representation across all groups in suspensions and discipline. So I just wanted to say that we're very much engaged in that right now.
Does anybody else have feedback or comments, questions? I just wanted to add that if, I know we have that snapshot of data from, I guess, last year, and now we have the state test back, et cetera, I feel like it's still only, you know, just a snapshot. And I know that we're comparing it to the learning standards, but I guess this really kind of overlaps with the second goal of the focus on the whole child. I think that those are, you know, just one small piece of the puzzle. And I don't know if we have, really, I think, out of all of the goals, this is the one that we probably pushed, pushed off because of COVID. And so I'm not sure exactly how much more we can start looking at them. I don't know at what point. I feel like we don't really know the full effects, right, of COVID with students. I mean, we hear of behavioral issues and kids having stamina to sit through the school day. So I don't know, I don't really have anything else to add to, to this one. But is it possible to hear about the equity action plans from the, the groups that met today?
Absolutely. We want to, they just began putting the plans together. I think they have one or two more sessions to get them done. I would suggest maybe in March, maybe sometime mid-March, late March, we'll be ready to bring in the teams so they can give an overview of what they're working on.
Great, thank you. Gloria?
Is this, is the whole, that this will give us a base of where we're at? So that then we can go forward? We really don't have the data to this point, right?
So the, the equity action plans are drawing their data from a variety of sources, including the equity walks that just happened, the focus groups that are happening this week, and other data sources that have been brought to the committees. So on one hand, yes, it's a baseline, but what the committees were working on today was, you know, short-term things that we can do based on what we've observed, mid-range activities, and then longer range. So we'll get, I think it's one to two, three to four, and five years out.
And on that second part, have you made any, were there any alternative steps? Maybe there's been any approach in any aspect that you know?
Um, I don't know. I'm not certain to rate for it.
I don't think we've made a lot of headway for, of a wide variety of reasons, so, but it is still important to us.
Great, so the next goal is focus on the whole child. It looks like the last few meetings, the comments were about the mental health professionals in the district, the caseloads in the, in the mental health clinic. Right now, I think, what, is the ratio still, it says one mental health professional for every one hundred and fifty students? Let's see, current. So I don't know if anything has changed on this, or if anyone else has comments or feedback about this.
I, I think my own comment would be that it's going to be very important for budget planning to address that ratio. And if we're going to be making tough choices between what we're prioritizing, looking at that ratio-
Especially in comparison to what other districts are doing, or what the recommended ratios are, could be really important.
I can add, I don't have the current ratio. I am going to hypothesize, though, that it is less, because we did bring on some additional mental health providers in titles like counselor using federal funds. Those are short-term. We, those funding streams will go through next year, right? No, twenty-three, yes, through next year. So I think right now, we're probably a little bit higher, and I can do that math and, and let everyone know where we are. But the extent to which we can transition additional positions into the general operating budget beyond next year is, that's the tricky part.
Mm-hmm.
Have you done any, we had said we could produce some kind of climate survey to, to, um, assess the social emotional thing, where we're doing, because if we're talking about moving forward, I mean, you just need to know where we're not meeting, the goals, and are we not making progress, and where we are?
I believe, and I have representatives from both the middle and high school here, that both middle and high school did some surveys of students around climate, culture, belonging earlier this year. So follow-ups later to see any change over time. So, yes.
Because I think that would be important, I, I mean, we just can't make the assumption, yes, we need to do this. We need, we need to see where, where, where the problem areas are, and where we might need to put resources.
Any other comments?
Vaca?
I do. Are we capturing how we're utilizing our social workers and our psychologists? I remember that Lisa Knowles came up and, and sort of presented a general description. But I wonder, are we capturing that in our surveys at all? And additionally, I'm curious, speaking of the culture surrounding mental health, is there a stigma? Do, do students perceive that there's a stigma in, you know, going to see a social worker? Those are just things I would like to capture, if possible.
Let me ask what you mean by, how do we capture it? Like, what kinds of things are they doing?
Yeah, are we asking students, you were talking about the survey that went out, did we ask that? I think we asked if they'd ever used the mental health services. But did we, did we ask things like, do you feel like there's a stigma attached to that?
I don't think that question was asked directly. I mean, we did it in the fall, and I'm, my memory is stretched a little bit to remember some of the specific questions. We can go back and look at that.
The only reason I bring it up is that it had come up at the, what is it, the subgroup of the DEI committee-
Okay.
-by students, and also, it had been, it had been mentioned at some of the focus groups that we're holding.
Okay.
And I won't get into it, because I believe we're not supposed to. So that's the only reason I bring it up.
Okay.
Any other comments or feedback? Right, so the next goal is focus on diversity, and I guess now we would maybe even change the name of that goal to DEI, if this has evolved. I don't know, I think we're probably hitting this goal, so I'm, I don't really have anything to add.
If you have a question?
Sure.
So, again, that's what I was hearing at some of the focus groups. Are we, through our DEI work, are we only focusing on race? Because I believe, that's a question that came up. I believe somebody said that the steering committee had decided that that was a priority, but they weren't sure if that was permanent, or it was for one year. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to get at that. We, it's not just a focus, right, on race?
No, I would say, and especially in work with progression partners, we're talking about-
All kinds of difference, so it's disability, social, emotion, socioeconomic differences, cultural differences, which would be, go beyond race, around religion and culture, gender.
So that's what I said, I want to be sure it was around, okay, good.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's been a good representative of all of those things on the DEI committee, now, at least there was. I think that's a focus to continue that.
Yeah, I believe when we selected members, we were cognizant of that.
Okay. I mean, we haven't updated the notes. I'm looking at this, and I can see that there was probably a lot done, even the MOU with the SROs, like how we changed it, how we changed the language to, I don't remember what it was, but it was basically supporting or providing PD for-
Requiring.
Or requiring, thank you, for the SRO. So I guess these are things that we could add to this, right? Because that impacts that goal, but we, we don't really, we're not really documenting that, so I guess I can do a better job of that. Any other comments or questions? Oh, Katie?
Looking at this goal and hearing from Matt Pinchinott, as wonderful as he is in all of the work that he's doing, as we're discovering more work that needs to be done across the district, and how much support is being provided to the high school, are we, are we looking at this to make sure that having Matt doing this work on his own, he's able to, to cover this goal and meet this goal throughout the district? You know, just really hearing if, if he's, you know, you know, he's talking about all of the work that he's doing, if, if he's needing more support in, in meeting this goal across the district at some point while we're, while we're working?
Yeah, that's an interesting question, Katie, because I was thinking, too, it's, it's a brand-new position. So I'm wondering if, I don't know, if he gives feedback to you, Dr. Wiles-
Oh, yes.
About like what he thinks, or where he thinks there could be more support, et cetera.
So we, we did talk about that, both at the end of his first year, which was actually September. But we also just had stage two with Matt. Matt gets a stage-two budget meeting as well. And we did talk about how much one individual can do when it comes to the, kind of the day-to-day meeting with individual people, providing professional development. So, you know, part of the role of the director is to have, create the capacity where some of the work is done through others, which is, you know, all of us. And I, I think Matt is absolutely working on that, building capacity among our administrative team, our equity teams, you know, teachers in some of our buildings, and, you know, other staff in our buildings who are committed to this work and are willing to step up and do. But at the same time, I know he is running like crazy. So, you know, we talked about the potential of perhaps expanding the, the role to include another teacher on special assignment who may help the PD. So we're talking about some things, and, you know, based on Andrew's presentation and some of the other variables, like what, what can we fit within our spending in order to make this happen? So that's an ongoing conversation. We do recognize that Matt's car is often the last in the driveway, and I sometimes have to yell at him to go home.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, my only comment on this one is, I mean, I, I feel like we're kind of patting ourselves on the back real well here and forgetting what happened at the beginning of the school year, and everything that kind of came out of that. And as great as strides as we've made-
There's a lot of work to do.
We've a lot of work to do, so I think we need to just take a pause on patting each other on the back and, and really dig deeper on what we can do in terms of professional development, what we can do in terms of student education and understanding, and building that up and finding ways to do just that. Because that, that, I think, is where we really fell at the beginning of the school year, and what kind of transpired and what else, what came after that. So if I think we need to add anything here, it's, it's, we've made good steps, but we got a long ways to go.
Sorry, I'm typing notes. Go ahead.
Yep, I think with regard to the, let's see, reaching out to the community and collaborating with the community, I think those fireside chats that are starting will be great. And then also, the students developed a flyer for the subcommittee for the DEI to try to get student involvement- And then also, um, the students developed a flyer for the subcommittee for the DEI to try to get student involvement to increase. And so I, I think those are, those are steps that are important to recommend.
Great. So, um, we'll go on to the next goal, which is facilities? And does anyone have feedback on this? I'm gonna add in that, um, some details about the, the capital projects that are going on. But I think in the past, I guess I'll have one, one piece of, one thing I can add. I know, I think it was before COVID, we talked about visiting one of the other school districts to see kind of like what a more futuristic school building would look like. And then COVID happened, so then we haven't done anything. So maybe, I don't know, that's something we could think about. I don't know if other people are interested. We've talked about getting a school bus and going like on a field trip as a board who, you know, other admin who are interested.
Yes, the invitation to Queensberry is standing. I've spoken with Kyle Gannon, who's the superintendent up there, a few times. And so whenever we're ready, I, I guess I just want to frame that in a bit of realism, that we are in the midst of our 2021 capital project that may get expanded out an additional year. We're hopeful that that won't in fact be the case. Um, but, um, so we have kind of a lot going on right now around our capital projects. So I'm not quite sure we're ready to launch the next until we get this one, at least through the state education department approval process, which we're hoping will be very soon. So I don't mean to put a wet blanket on it, but just a, a dose of, we have a lot going on right now.
Well, also the, um, the school bus is having to be electric by twenty, I don't know, twenty thirty-five?
Yes.
Thirty-seven, something like that? What's that?
That should probably eventually...
That also seems like it could be a...
Bullet or something on there at some point.
Yeah, and, and that's, uh, that's a law, right? So that's not really an option.
It's also making us future-ready, right? And that's part of the smart goals.
Andrew, do you know any updates on the, when that will really happen?
No. There, the New York's law is in two parts. So there is a, a deadline after which you can no longer purchase, uh, non-zero emission vehicles, which right now are like the buses. And then there's a deadline for full transmission. Uh, the one thing that has happened is in November, the state passed the Federal Bond Act, which was a point two billion, I think, but it had five hundred million dedicated to electric school buses. So that is a very positive sign. We are hopeful that the state, in its budget process this year, will, will, uh, support districts. NYSERTA is supposedly releasing a technical document in the next few months about a roadmap for school districts because they're charged in the law with providing all the technical support that school districts need. So we should be getting a lot more information and resources in the next few months. Uh, but I also think that the way the market is going, um, it's, it's important to start planning for it, but it's premature to probably buy, without, uh, the districts that are buying buses are doing so at least partially with grant funding that has been available.
Any other, um, comments? Okay, so we can move on to the last one? I think it's, wait, is that the last one?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's good. Um, any other comments or feedback, or, this is the Google Doc that I just added notes on. Um, so I can just send this link, and if you want to add anything on there, you can. Because I don't think this has been updated, um, in a little bit, so. Great, so we'll look at this, I think, was it toward the end of the year, again? But I guess, back to Rebecca's question, can, some of that data, Dr. Wiles, can we have, you know, if we are planning the budget and we're looking at, whatever was in the first one?
The, the quantitative about where we are.
Yeah, yeah.
So I wrote myself a note here about perhaps doing some kind of a program report that would capture some of this information sometime between now and when we actually adopt the budget. Might be helpful.
Thank you. So back to the agenda. Um, next we'll move on to action items. Um, school business, Andy?
Thank you very much. Our first action item is accepting a walk-in cooler freezer bid award. Bids were open on January fifth. We received three of them. Uh, this is for a walk-in cooler freezer that will be installed at Gilderland Elementary. Uh, the lowest bid is for eighty-eight thousand nineteen dollars from Saratoga Restaurant Equipment Sales.
Can I have a motion to approve the walk-in cooler freezer bid? Gloria, second, Kelly, any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
The next action item is for the granted easement related to Cobblestone Schoolhouse and the neighboring property. Uh, this would be an easement that would allow the property owners, uh, access to a hundred-foot by seven-foot section of the property in exchange, the school district would have access to its property via this driveway and parking and, um, I think needed, uh, access to the school through the driveway that was built there.
Great. Can I have a motion to approve the grant of easement with the Cobblestone Schoolhouse? Katie, second, Nate, any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
Uh, next we have three internship agreements with schools, Maria College, SUNY O'Nianta, and SUNY Potstam. Uh, these are agreements that would allow for students to, uh, be working in the district and getting experience while also benefiting the district.
Can I have a motion to approve the internship agreements with Maria College, SUNY O'Nianta, and Potstam? Blanca, second, Judy, any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
And next is approval for interfund transfers, uh, in the total of fifty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Uh, these are two transfers. One is related to, uh, additional funds for non-instructional salaries, and another is related to the costs of the appraisal of the Crossgate Mall property.
Can I have a motion to approve these general fund transfers? Nate, second, Rebecca, any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
Uh, the next item is an emergency contract for transportation services with Amazing Grace Transportation and the Raja Group. Uh, these are for new transportation responsibilities related to McKinney-Vento students and a new enrollment at True North.
Can I have a motion to approve these emergency contracts? Kelly, second, Gloria, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Passes eight zero.
Uh, next we have the Gilderland High School class of nineteen seventy-one would like to establish an annual scholarship of five hundred dollars over the next five years to a high school graduate in good standing who has financial need, does not want another award during the graduating year, and may be attending a trade school apprenticeship program or two or four-year college or university.
Can I have a motion to approve this, um, scholarship award? Katie, second, Blanca, any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
And finally, approving the donation that we started the meeting with from Best Buy for twenty-five thousand dollars in computers and, um, cash.
Can I have a motion to approve the donation or accept the donation? Kelly, second, Rebecca, any questions or comments? So thank you again to Best Buy. All in favor?
Hi.
Passes eight zero. Thank you, Andy. Next we have Superintendent Action, Dr. Wiles.
Thank you. My first item is a resolution that would authorize Cliff Noonie, our Director of Facilities, to apply for a grant to the U.S. Department of Energy. Um, he would be applying for an award through a new program called Renew America's Schools Programs, to be used on eligible projects that can include a variety of energy improvements such as heating, ventilation, air conditioning, as well as new windows. Uh, the deadline for the applicant concept paper, which is kind of the first phase of the application, is January twenty-sixth, and the full applications are due April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, we have a policy that requires that any grant that would be potentially more than a thousand dollars, that we bring it to the board for approval before submitting it.
Great. Can I have a motion to approve the grant application? Nate, second, Kelly, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Passes eight zero.
And my second item this evening is a follow-up to discussion that we had at the last board meeting about amending our current memorandum of understanding with the Gilderland Police Department over our SRO program. Um, the highlighted section, which is letter C, training requirements, reflects an interest in saying that training for SROs is not recommended, but rather required. So about halfway through that paragraph, it says, in addition, it is required that SROs receive, and this next part is new as well, at least two additional trainings each year on topics such as, and there's a wide variety of their, a wide variety of school-related topics, um, including, I just want to point out the cultural competence piece, which would meet our, um, workaround DEI. I did share this language with, um, Chief Dan McNally. He is very much in support of it. And, uh, once the board acts on this, the town will be doing the same.
Great. Can I have a motion to approve the MOU with the police department? Rebecca, second, Katie, any questions or comments?
I just have some questions about this. Um, the two additional trainings, when we talk about hours of initial training before, two additional trainings could be, I think we need to be more specific here. Um, and, and the other issue I have is, some of the topics of which these two additional trainings are just repetitive of the topics they have above. I know some of the concerns is really more about the cultural competency. If you're giving them this wide variety of what they can do additional trainings in, are they just gonna be repeating the training area again? Which is kind of not what we are trying to get to with adding these additional required trainings. Like, I'm looking at like conflict resolution. Well, that's, conflict resolution is literally one of the ones above it. Um, trending school-based law enforcement topics. New York educational laws is above it. If, if we're trying to get them to go above and beyond what they're getting trained for as an SRO, I think we need to focus on those topics which they are not trained for as an SRO. That, that, those are my comments. I mean, that's, again, my issues have been stated, and I'm just pointing that out.
And, Dr. Wiles, I know you mentioned that they were going to have like a, like SROs meeting from different school districts in the area through BOSIs. Um, is there a way that we can maybe just follow up and see what kind of offerings that BOSIs would have for that group? Because if I remember correctly, we couldn't find anything that was there besides what's offered at the school.
So, um, the, the short answer is yes. I mean, they're gonna offer the training that we asked them to offer. They're very much interested in our input on what would be useful and appropriate. So the other piece of this is, for example, we're, um, getting ready to plan our, we are planning our March Superintendent Conference Days. And one of the things we're talking about are, what are the sessions that we would offer for our employees that would be helpful for SROs? So in addition to the culturally relevant or cultural competence pieces, we've also heard from families who say, well, let's make sure our SROs have a good understanding of what it means to work with students with disabilities, especially students with autism. That, that came up in particular. So the idea was, and I do see there's some redundancy here, that these would be topics that are really about school manifestations of these topics. So not just conflict resolution in general, but, you know, conflict resolution among middle school students, or, so, I mean, that's the intent. I know it doesn't say exactly that.
We just, somebody who works on the vagaries of these contracts, I mean, my, my issue is, when you give somebody the ability to be repetitive in their training, they might just take that opportunity to be repetitive in their training. Whereas what we're, my understanding of what we were talking about of acquiring this was to have them do what you were talking about, the school manifestations of these issues. So if we, if we are taking this opportunity to craft what we want those additional trainings to be, then let's be accurate in what we want them to be. That's just, you know, I, I could spend eight hours a day reading contracts. I mean, I'm looking up and below. Conflict resolution's there, child development's there. I mean, it's just...
What if we added something at the end where it was more suggested by Superintendent of Schools or something like that? But I see you mean it's like repeated list.
Not everything's repeated, but I think there's enough repetition that we're missing an opportunity.
What about, receive at least two additional trainings relevant to the school district each year on topics such as?
Yeah.
I feel like we're in policy.
That way it's sort of open-ended?
We worked out in policy.
Yeah, we can, I mean, we can vote on it with the amendment if, if it's, right, Dr. Wiles, if it's not going to be like a huge change to the language, we can just vote on it with the amendment. What was the language that you had, Rebecca?
At least two additional trainings each year relevant to the school district.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that, that's at least a little bit more specific.
Well, it gives us some control to pick what's, what's important to us this year. Because, you know, there may come a day when we have the cultural competency down, and we don't have to worry about it. Maybe.
We know when that happens. Whatever the focus is of that year, it could, something catastrophic could have happened and different than that, and we need a focus. You know, you never know.
Well, that's right, because these things are evolving, everything's changing.
Different ten years ago than it was, and I...
Yeah, that was, um, a good catch, Nate. So can we, um, change the, add that language in there? And then we'll vote based on the additional language that Rebecca added? Is everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So all in favor of approving this with the amended language? Motion carries eight zero. Thank you, Dr. Wiles.
Sure.
Next we'll go to Board Committee reports. First, we'll go to Communications.
Thanks. We met on December twelfth, and we had three, uh, three basic, um, discussions. The first one was on the voter turnout analysis, that we continue to look at. Um, as a follow-up to our last Communications Committee meeting, when Neil shared the work that he and Linda Livingston had done to analyze the voter turnout in Westmere, they went ahead and did the other catchment areas. So we got some data there. Um, Altamont had twenty-six percent of eligible voters vote. Gilderland seventeen percent, Lynnwood nineteen percent, Pine Bush twenty percent, Westmere fourteen percent. And that's where our discussion first started, with Westmere. We wanted to see where the other catchment areas fell. Um, we discussed the value of gathering these numbers, especially in subsequent years as we move forward, to see how that progresses. Uh, now that the model is built, hopefully it will be a lot quicker to do. Linda won't have as much, uh, work to do. Uh, Neil noted at the meeting that gathering the street-by-street information is more difficult, especially with apartment complexes. Um, Marie suggested that we look at the flex zone streets, uh, designations. We have those areas that are flex zones because they include a lot of those apartments. So we're still gonna move forward. Uh, we're, ongoing questions about this analysis include, are the turnout numbers typical? And we'll know that as we move forward. Uh, are there areas within the district that we want to focus our information outreach efforts? And that's what we're really looking to learn, are the things we need to be doing, uh, in certain areas. So that was our first discussion. Our second topic was the community engagement, which the board asked us to talk about and think about, uh, in terms of for the budget, how we can, uh, increase that from just using the thought exchange to other ways of doing that. So we brainstormed a number of ideas to gather community input, to augment what we were learning from the thought exchange. The idea so far that we brainstormed was partnering with the PTA to hold events or activities at various buildings, uh, conducting surveys, setting up an information booth at highly attended events on the budget, revisiting the community conversations, using BOSIs facilitators to assist with small group discussions that we invite people to come to, offering an online forum like those done during the summer prior to the reopening of school when we were dealing with COVID. So those, so far we've brainstormed those ideas. If anybody has other things for us to consider, feel free to email me something. After considering some of the challenges, so some of these things are more challenging than others to get going. For example, low attendance and participation, bringing people out at night just seemed to be a difficult thing, uh, in the past. Cost of facilitators, of course. Uh, difficulty of creating valid and reliable survey tools. The consensus of the group was that a tentative recommendation to hold focus group meetings after we release the March, the, the budget, the, the draft. That then people will have something to talk to and reflect on, and then share their thinking about. At that time, the community will have something to respond to as opposed to completely open-ended questions, you know, what's important to you, or kind of things. We will also have just completed the focus group meetings for DEI, which are going on now, and then we'll have some good, good insight as to how to structure them perhaps. So that's one we're leaning towards right now, but we haven't put any final things. Hoping at our next communications committee meeting, we'll be able to come back with some recommendation as to what, what we might do to get, gather community input. And our third item, I just happened to ask the committee to follow up to our meeting with our school attorney. So I asked the committee for some feedback on the December sixth meeting, and some of the comments from the group included, it was a good reminder of some of the problems that come along with using email. It's always good to review our practices midway. It's a good idea. The paper handout that Jeff gave us was very helpful, some people thought. There's still some question from some about the subjectivity of what's appropriate to include in an email discussion. But the final kind of, the thing we came to is there should not be discussion via email to avoid violating the open meetings law. Email is not for discussion. The board did not resolve a discipline matter. That was the subject of an email that the board had received from a parent. And our conclusion from that was, a discipline matter would only be acted upon by a board if it was brought to them through the formal appeal process. So there was no reason for us to be talking about that. The building principal takes the lead on discipline, goes to the superintendent in cases where a hearing is required, and then would only come to us on an appeal. And finally, the off the, there was an off the cuff comment about the positivity project during the regular meeting when we were discussing the SRO, and members on the committee felt that that was hurtful to staff, and it really wasn't appropriate because we were dealing with a topic on the SRO, and we shouldn't be just bringing in another topic without properly having it on the agenda for discussion. So that, that was some of our feedback. Our next meeting date is January seventeenth at four o'clock. If you have any input for us, I'm all ears.
Great. Gloria, the voter turnout, the first topic, are those numbers on the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there's a little chart.
Great. So the next committee, business practices?
We have not met, and when Andrew is ready, we'd be happy to.
Great. Audit and audit.
We have not met, and we do not have a meeting scheduled.
And policy?
Uh, we have not met in a while. We've been having issues trying to get things scheduled. Our hope is, uh, my understanding is probably beginning of February when everybody's feeling.
Great, thank you. And then DEI?
We met on December twentieth.
Yes.
Right before the holidays. We kind of already talked about a lot of the things that we discussed, like in the course of this meeting tonight. We talked about the fireside chats that are happening in the community. We talked about.
The focus groups, yeah. Focus groups.
Yep. We talked about the engagement with the students through the flyer with a QR code. We had our book discussion. We talked about some books that all of, or many of the members of the committee recommended for their own families or for their own use, that I think are available on the agenda. Trying to think of what else. We talked a little bit about the equity audit, which you kind of discussed tonight.
Great. Thank you, Rebecca. Those are all the committees, right? I'm not forgetting anybody. Okay. Public comment number two. Linda, is anybody else to comment? Okay, thank you. And last, board issues, ideas, and sharing? Gloria?
I had the opportunity to go to one of the assemblies that they've been this week. What's the title of the group? Crime? Violent crime and something. They, they.
Sexual violence.
Yeah, sexual violence, basically. And someone from the Albany County Center came and facilitated this program. There were four assemblies, one for each grade level. I got to the tenth grade one, and students really formed the core of it. Talk about Matt encouraging students, and, and I know Mike played a big role in working with these students and getting them organized, and it took a lot of courage to do what they did. I have to say, sitting in that assembly, the tenth graders were like focused. They were really paying attention to the topic of sexual harassment, sexual, sexual violence. And the kids did a great job, and there was such a, a respect shown among the four members, from Mike to them and them to Mike. There, obviously a lot, it was obvious, a lot of work had gone into the dialogue. I know on your part, Mike, I have to say, it was very evident. And the kids took it very seriously. So congratulations on a beautiful program. And I know there's lots more to do, but it was great to see the conversation begin, and the kids were paying attention to it.
I've got a question.
Oh, go ahead, Kelly.
Kind of circling back to the school calendar. We notice it's still, it's still, we're still kind of toeing this line between Indigenous People's Day and Columbus Day that are both on there. It seems confusing. And like, I just happen to look at our, my, my calendar from the federal government, and it's, there's no talk of Columbus Day. I don't think.
Right.
It's a state calendar, probably has no talk of it. I can't imagine anybody else, it just seems like we're holding on to something for, for no particular reason, and I'm wondering.
And it's come up at DEI, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about this last year. Thanks for bringing up, Kelly, and, and to see that.
Yes, thank you.
It's, I don't know, I think it's ridiculous to have both. It looks so dumb.
I mean, is there a reason to, does anybody have a reason to keep it on there? I, I, it just seems confusing, and I think people get sideways looks because it's on the calendar that way of like, well, it's just.
Well, one of the students pointed out at the DI meeting, how ridiculous it is to have both.
Yes.
It, it looks, it looks ridiculous, and I agree with that.
And we had both this year, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think if we're going to do it, you just do it, and I don't, I don't, I don't see any other organizations keeping both at the current time, and.
Kelly, which calendar were you looking at besides ours?
This draft calendar. Oh, um, my.
No, not ours. I, I know ours.
My day's off calendar from the, the government.
Federal government?
Yeah, the federal government.
Federal, it says Indigenous people.
Sure, sure does, yeah.
I'm pretty sure the state one does.
The state one. I don't know what the state one says.
Yeah, the federal one does.
Yeah, sure does. So I, can we just maybe make a motion to scratch it and, and, and release on the draft one and, and see if there's any comments that.
Yeah, I don't understand why we, there was a discussion about it, and then it was the summer, and then we started the school year, we had a discussion about it, and then we moved on after kind of, I think, the whole football game, and then we changed the discussion, and then we never got back to it.
Yeah, we didn't.
But does this draft calendar, Dr. Wiles, does this mean like how it's displayed to, including like all the names down below?
So this is really, the, the purpose of this calendar is largely, how do we get to a hundred and eighty days of instruction? Or in this case, a hundred and eighty-one days of instruction. So the reason they're both there is because we're trying to get the calendar pinned down for a hundred and eighty days. And how it gets labeled, I guess, you know, ultimately is a board decision. So if there was, you know, if you were to say, we're not going to have Columbus Day noted on the calendar, we don't have to do it, but I would caution that we will hear about it. And so I'm just saying that. You know, last year, we were kind of stuck in the middle with the print date to get our other document to print. We have plenty of time before the main calendar that gets published and hung on people's refrigerator gets published. So I for one would love guidance on, are we doing one, the other, or both?
As stated, given any.
They have not.
I don't know why we have to keep.
They have a calendar out.
Stayed out.
Well, I would just make a motion. Like, I would make a motion, you want to, Kelly? We just changed this.
I think, I think it's confusing to have two, and if we're getting to like a, if it's a, if this is, purpose of this is to count up days, I'm counting two October nines on there. I'm like, makes it more confusing.
I think that's a, I think that's a typo.
Well, it just says October ninth, Indigenous People's Day, October ninth, Columbus Day.
Yeah. It should only have one October ninth on there.
It should be Indigenous People slash Columbus Day. All right. I, I, I'll make a motion to just call it Indigenous People's Day and be done with it. Um, well, that's I guess not the formal motion. The motion would be to, uh, make, cover ninth Indigenous People's Day.
I guess just to clarify, Kelly, to label it on our actual calendar.
And label it that way on the actual calendar, just to avoid confusion. And we welcome comments. I just don't see any other entity doing it both ways at the moment, so.
Can we postpone this, just?
Can, can we?
Vote till next?
Yeah, since we even do that?
I'd like to, you know, you want to talk. I want to give peace.
Rules, guidance over here?
Yeah, I, well, I'm just saying, I think it would be nice to give people a chance to just, I don't like, I, I really don't like to just jump into a decision right away, even though I'm, I'm leaning one way, but I think it would be.
I just want to add, so like, this is what happened last spring, and then.
Right, but we, we put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Right, but I'm just saying, right, I'm just saying that this happened last spring.
Right.
And it came up, and it came up, and it came up, and then all of a sudden, Kelly and I were contacted, like, oh, the calendar needs to be printed.
Right.
So we need to make a decision now.
Right.
So.
So let's make the decision next meeting. Well, it's a year ago, like, what?
Yeah, it's almost a year ago.
It's on the agenda now. The agenda is draft calendar. We're talking.
And I don't, it's not like we didn't discuss it. So I totally agree.
Yeah, it's not even discussed.
And you're not adopting a calendar tonight, honestly. Remember, this is a draft. It's for information.
Okay. Yeah. That's fine.
So perhaps all of the action could happen in two weeks.
Sure. So when we vote on it, we want to make a motion then to change it? Because this is up for a vote right now.
Can the motion just be to remove the reference of Columbus Day on the current draft calendar?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
I will make a motion
There you go.
to have Columbus Day removed from the current draft calendar for consideration by the board.
I'll second that.
There you go.
So when we vote on the actual calendar next time, then we can just vote on that same motion as well?
Perfect.
So when this comes back next week, it'll say October ninth Indigenous People's Day.
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to vote still, or no?
Go on the motion.
To accept the motion?
It was, all in favor of having that come back, you know, when we, when this calendar comes up for action?
Mm-hmm.
Aye.
Aye.
Pass is eight zero. Thanks, Kelly, for going to that. Any other board issues, ideas, and sharing?
I just wanted to share, Seema and I are the board members for the advisory committee for the business program, teachers program at the high school, and tomorrow they will be holding their interviews with members. They collaborate with the Chamber of Commerce, and local business leaders will be coming and helping students with experience with interviews and for jobs, so just compliments to the hard work of the program at the high school for that tomorrow.
Yeah, they're great. Oh, go ahead, Judy.
This, I just had never seen in action before, and, uh, I don't know when it was, a month ago, two months ago, I went to the dentist, and they had asked me ahead of time if it would be okay, their son was going to have back to work or observe some, you know, your parents or something. And it was wonderful. He, he was dressed very professionally, and he was watching intently. He wasn't in the way. I didn't think it was anything that he ever wanted to do, but he seemed very interested, and I think what an op, wonderful opportunity.
Oh, the job shadow day.
The job, right.
Yeah, my daughter did that too. I thought it was great.
I thought, I thought it was wonderful, and I'd never been witness to it before, and just to see what it did for him was, was very good. I was very pleased with it.
Because helping them find it, I realized a lot of friends or people I know work from home, so I had to figure out who does not work from home.
And, and does it, is it the whole school, the, the whole eighth grade? Yeah, and I, is it, well, okay.
Years.
I know, but I just never seen it. And I was very impressed with it, and how seriously he took it, and his parents, obviously. So, thank you.
Oh, want this?
Yep. We're still on, right, board issues, ideas, and sharing? Marie, this question might be for you. It might be for Mike Piscatelli. We, Katie and I had a few parents ask us, well, they were discussing the trades and how, how the school promotes students who maybe want to take a different path and not go to college, how they promote different options. And I remember asking when I first joined the board, and I think I remember you said it was part of a presentation. And so when is that presentation? What year does that take place? And, and what are we doing basically to let students know about what they can do?
So this is the introduction to CTE? Sorry, Mike.
All the, all of that gets kind of through our counseling department and what they do in the spring. I believe it's the sophomore year. They bring them over, for students who are interested, they bring them over actually to the CTE facility for tours and presentation about the programs over there.
So students have to sort of self-select and say that they're interested? It's not like everybody's learning about it?
We don't do a presentation to the whole student body about it. No, it's usually in those individual conversations with their counselor that it comes up that they have an interest in those areas.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to sort of food for thought, Marie. The vibe that we got, and correct me if I'm wrong, Katie, is that some parents would like to see us, they, they're saying that students don't know. They know about college being an option out of high school, but they're not really, they don't even know what trades are or the different paths that there are. So it's only the students that are sort of self-selecting, it sounds like, but if there's a way to, to introduce it to the general student body, that might be good.
If I can add something to this. The Association for General Contractors AGC, New York City AGC, has in-school programs. I don't know if we have ever worked with them, but they, I was at a presentation probably about a month ago, and they specifically mentioned about coming into high schools and providing knowledge about alternative paths, alternative jobs. I mean, construction industry is going to be booming. I mean, that's where the jobs are going to be for the next ten years, because that's where all the federal funds are going to, is building. And a lot in this area, there's massive projects going up all through the corridor. I mean, Micron, Utica, Global Foundries. So I, I don't know if our counselors have reached out to the AGC, but I know that that would be a good place to start with, with having those types of presentations.
Yeah, that's great. I didn't know that existed. And what I, what I know about is that for CSA employees, for example, and for other unions, any, one of their benefits now is doubled for interest in trades. So even if you're a secretary, but you're interested in welding, your normal benefit is worth twice as much now, so you get twice as much money to study, and that's a way of tackling it. So it could, it can really be lucrative for students.
I mean, glad you brought up want, not just that, because I remember a couple of years ago, in the board meeting, we had the business teachers do a presentation on like different courses that students could take, and I remember, and this is one thing the barbed, and I agreed on it, was the personal finance course, and kind of, you know, how important it was, and then how it's, I don't want to say sold, but kind of marketed to students. And there's also stigmas attached to it, which I feel like is detrimental to students, like.
Yes.
So I don't know, thinking about the way that that is offered, or, you know, the way the opportunities are given to students and the way that it, that it provided.
Right. And, and just so you know, Seema, it was brought up in the context of DEI, in that not all families can afford. College isn't even something they can consider. And so they need their children to go and begin in the workforce, and they need a different path. And so they, it was brought up that way.
I, I know that there were some presentations that were done in specialized tutorial for some students. I don't know if all academic tutorials have presented them at the high school, but I, I did see through, you know, that specialized tutorial had done some work presenting that to students. And I know that there is a big push currently with, with BOSI CTE Center with presentations that help highlight women in trades so that it's, you know, that female students are also seeing that as an opportunity to them because there are certain trades that, you know, women have to, that have not been steered towards. Or students have felt that when they've met, you know, in, in different, with advisors, weren't really as open for them, but so they're trying to break through some of that and open up all trades to female students.
Yeah, I, I know that this coming week, I can't intend, but I know that there's like the parent meeting for eighth grade students like that will go, you know, into high school next year. And so I'm wondering if, and I don't know, because it didn't happen yet, if that's where there's, like, what kind of opportunities are shared at those meetings? Because I also think in, in terms of like DEI and, and, and just exposure, if, if people don't know that it's there, they won't know to ask those questions.
Right, or to attend, right. They don't know.
Yeah.
And then the last thing I was asked to ask Marie or Mike is, actually, no, wouldn't you be Mike? Or wouldn't you be you? It might be Mike Laster. When is advanced placement for eighth grade discussed with the parents? When should they be expecting some kind of email? When should they be expecting some kind of email? Is there a meeting? How does that work?
You mean acceleration?
Yeah, so seventh graders going into eighth grade, who would take, you know, what is it, biology that they're here?
Um, it'd be, um, algebra one and bio. I think right around now is typically when that would happen.
Okay, and so do the students have to show an interest? Do the parents have to reach out? Will they be contacted?
I think initially teacher recommendation.
I'll just add, cause we're going through that right now.
Right.
I, um, I don't know what the parent brought up, but I, um, so I know that there's a meeting this coming week for parents about it, but the students have to do like a self-assessment before that. Um, and this is going to the high school, sorry, sorry, so not seventh to eighth, I'm talking about eighth to ninth.
That's okay, but I think they're similar, yeah.
But it's the same idea that, I don't know, now that, I guess we're going through from eighth to ninth, a lot of this stuff is, I feel like even people who are really looped in, who are parents who are super engaged and went to school here and speak English as their first language, it's, um, a lot to figure out. And so I can't, I, I just don't, I feel like they could do a better job. And when I say better job, we could do a better job of how that's presented to parents. Um, I know parents asked me, oh, well, oh, what do you have to do for that? And it was the day the self-assessments were due by their kids. So like, you know, there's a transition when they're like twelve and thirteen of like, yes, they have to take on some of that on their own, but they're also getting their support from the parents and they might not know the full term or the long-term impact of those decisions or not asking those questions then. And, um, I know people have said this in the past. So I don't think it's new. I'm just personally having, you know, have, I've been to experience this right now. Um, so I don't know what that parent brought up, but I definitely see that that is a bit of a concern.
It was in reference to their child and my child, actually. It was, have you received anything yet about accelerated? And I said, no, you know, as, as my, not as a board member, but as, as a parent. And I said, no, I'll find out when, if there's a meeting, an interest meeting, what, how you go about it. Um, my, and then with regard to what you were saying, you know, my, my middle child is a high schooler now. And I remember that I didn't hear about what my child had decided or had sort of assessed herself as in terms of placement. And one of, one of the things that I struggle with is expecting that an eighth grader who may have, you know, not feel confident in a certain subject, that they're going to say that they should be in, in, you know, in honors. I know some, some students may feel like, oh, yeah, I, I could totally be honors. But other students who are capable and their parents would know that, they may not feel that way. And so that concerns me a bit as well.
And it's also going back to, like, so the current eighth grade never had a not, like, so sixth grade was the COVID year. And then, um, so they never had the, you know, a normal middle school experience. So we're going back to these processes and not really making adjustments for that. And assuming that students can make those decisions or know what to ask, et cetera. And they have not had a normal experience. So, um, I don't know, I have concerns about that.
Same.
All right, I will reach out to, to Mike to see the, what's the timeline and what's the exact process.
Thank you.
Any other board issues, ideas and sharing? So can I have a motion to adjourn? Rebecca, second. Katie, all in favor? Passes eight zero. Thanks, everybody.